I am recording.
All right, I will now call to order the Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Bloomington Housing and Redevelopment Authority to order. First item on the agenda is a roll call of attendees. I will now call the roll call of attendees. Baloga. Baloga. Hugim. Lewis.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
And Thorson is present. Let the record show that at least at the beginning of the meeting, Commissioner Baloga is not present. Everyone else is present. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Lewis, I move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Hugim seconds.
A motion by Lewis, second by Hugim to approve the agenda. I will now do a roll call vote. Hugim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And Thorson is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Onto the approval of minutes. The first one we have is approval of the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting minutes. Do we have any edits or questions about the minutes or discussion?
Commissioner Thorson? It is, you indicated it was the two thousand and twenty-three minutes. It's actually still only two thousand and twenty-one.
What?
You just said, it's a two thousand and twenty-three.
Really? All right, well, two thousand and twenty-one minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to go, I don't want to go any faster and get any older any faster than I have to, so.
That works for all of them.
Do we?
We're breaking up? He's muted. Chair Thorson, you're muted. Thank you.
Um, did I hear a motion in a second? No, do we have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Hugim makes the motion to approve the January nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one HRA Commission Special Meeting Minutes.
Commissioner Olson, seconds.
I will have a motion by Hugim, second by Olson. I will now do the roll call vote. Hugim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
And as an aye, motion passes unanimously. Onto the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one Commission Meeting Minutes, regular meeting. Is there a discussion of those minutes? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Commissioner Olson moves approval of those minutes.
Commissioner Lewis, second.
Motion by Olson, second by Lewis. I will now do the roll call vote. Hugim?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Oh.
Aye.
Thorson is aye. Motion passes unanimously. Onto organizational business. Item four point one, Strategic Planning Continuation Special Meeting Scheduled. Are there any comments on that?
Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. This is just reiterating and going through that we have scheduled the special session for the strategic planning for next week. February, sorry, February sixteenth. I was thrown off by the date I'm seeing here. And so just, just reiterating that and just reminding our commissioners that we did that meeting and approved the calendar at our last meeting, last regularly scheduled meeting, which included the special meeting.
Thank you for that. And it is, again, I would encourage everyone to attend it. And it's a very important meeting. And I'm sure we'll be getting materials ahead of time to, to facilitate our discussion at the meeting. Onto new business. Item five point one, Opportunity Housing Ordinance Amendments. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Thorson, Commissioners. Please give me a moment to pull up the presentation. I suppose I have to remember to share my screen first. Oh, can you see it already?
Can see it. All right, go ahead.
I can see it.
Yep, I can see it.
Everyone can see it now? Great. Thank you. We are bringing before you this evening the proposed amendments to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. They are being presented tonight to the HRA for a approval and recommendation to the City Council to approve. They will go to the Planning Commission on February twenty-fifth and the City Council on March eighth. This timeline is important. We very much hope that the City Council will approve the ordinance changes in March because we have eighty-twelve Old Cedar, the Reuter Walton proposed development coming through in March and April. And it's imperative that the ordinance changes that allow them to build a sixty-eight unit development on a smaller lot at Eightieth and Old Cedar, that they can meet their deadline. They, they received eleven million dollars in bonds in, in January. And once again, we have a July first deadline. So we are hopefully moving the Opportunity Housing Ordinance forward in, in a, in a reasonable timeline in order to assist that development in retaining their eleven million dollars in, in bonds from the state. As we are all very committed to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance to promote the development of new affordable housing and the preservation of existing naturally occurring affordable housing, while also furthering private market development in the city. The ordinance was adopted. It, it was set forth by the City Council and adopted on February twenty-fifth of two thousand and nineteen, amended in August of two thousand and nineteen, and as you all know, launched on September first of two thousand and nineteen. The Opportunity Housing Ordinance Annual Report to the City Council was presented on August tenth, two thousand and twenty, along with additional joint study sessions with the Housing and Redevelopment Authority on September twenty-first and October twenty-second. Those are the main conversations that led to the proposed recommendations that are before you this evening, as long as, as, and along with previous community engagement sessions with the Bloomington Housing Action Team, both in two thousand and twenty and again today. And we also will be scheduling a meeting between now and the City Council Public Hearing Date, hopefully with property owners through the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association and housing developers through ULI. Also, last fall, Twin Cities Lisk held several meetings for developers, property owners, other governments, the philanthropic sector and Bloomington residents. So we have a lot of great feedback on the proposed changes to date. The, there are four types of proposed amendments. One are future considerations that we will, with one exception, not be discussing today or with this series of amendments. The second are minor edits. Those are typos or exchanging a may for a shall. Those are things we will not be discussing today. But the clarifications and the changes will be the topic of today's discussion. The clarifications are in the section for definitions, the opportunity housing requirement, payment in lieu, affordable housing tools and incentives, and objectives. The first clarification is to clearly define the terms for implementation and flexibility, especially affordable, affordable rents and income limits. These definitions are being elaborated on to more clearly match the HUD definition and the Metropolitan Council definition of affordable, affordable rents and income limits. And to note, this does include fees and costs in the calculation of affordable rent. This will give developers flexibility in how they cash flow and finance their projects, while at the same time ensuring that our affordability requirements and outcomes are met. This is nine point four in the definition section. Nine point six are, is the opportunity housing requirement. Staff recommends that new multifamily residential units include newly constructed, converted, or infill development. This allows for the development of housing converted from commercial, office, hotel, or other uses. Nine point oh-nine, payment in lieu. Staff recommends further defining how and when the developer make a payment of the fee in lieu, and also defines that the payment of the fee in lieu is deposited in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for future development preservation or writing the cost down to a lower, deeper income level. This provides the city with additional assurance of receiving the fee while allowing the developer to retain the funds during construct, the construction period of the first phase if, as needed. This is not, that is just a clarification, not a major change to the ordinance. There is an important future consideration, however, and that is that the current, current payment in lieu rate is nine dollars and sixty cents. This was set by the Economic Impact Study, and staff is recommending that this be updated every three to five years to ensure the city is capturing eligible costs. We did have a conversation with Bay Area Economics regarding the updating of the fee, payment of the fee in lieu. In addition to the three to five years, there could be some major shift in the housing market that would necessitate a revision as well. But even in the pandemic, affordable housing development is going strong, and this is something that we do not think needs to occur, occur every year. Nine point fifteen, tools and incentives. This would allow city, the City Council to approve any additional combination of measures that would increase the number of units that are affordable, but may currently deviate from requirements outlined by the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Once again, this would be by City Council approval. Nine point three six, objectives. The, one of the most important objectives of the ordinance is that the affordable housing units are integrated throughout the city as well as throughout proposed developments. This clarification also adds that the affordability of the unit sizes proposed be integrated in whatever bedroom types the development proposes. So if there are three and four bedroom units in the property as a whole, there must be three and four bedroom units that are affordable as well. And this more clearly clarifies, of course, the city and the HRA's intent to potential developers. Moving on to the changes. There are changes in the opportunity housing requirement, changes to the tools and incentives, changes in the financial incentives, changes to the height bonus, the parking reduction, enclosed parking space conversion allowance, alternative exterior materials allowance, and the storage space reduction. The first change is to the opportunity housing requirement. Staff recommends that for new, single-family residential developments that they must be affordable at one hundred and fifteen percent AMI instead of one hundred and ten percent AMI. This does not mean that the HRA and the city will not continue to work with developers to provide single-family homeownership or residential opportunity at a much lower AMI. Sometimes with subsidies, it's possible to hit fifty or sixty percent AMI. But this change from one-ten to one-fifteen makes it easier for potential developers to pair potential HRA and City of Bloomington funds with state Minnesota housing funds and other funds that are currently available for single-family residential. Section nine fifteen, affordable housing tools and incentives. The staff recommends that the City Council may, at its sole discretion, allow the use of incentives for developments that create or preserve fewer than twenty units, where the City Council finds it to be in the public's interest. This would encourage single-family development and give the City Council the opportunity to preserve an existing NOAA development that had fewer than twenty units. This could be a more substantial deviation from the original intent of the ordinance, but in light of the council's strong recommendations that the HRA add more tools to promote single-family homeownership, we believe that in order for single-family homeownership to be considered realistically within the city, that less than, less than twenty unit development would be required. Another important part of the change to nine fifteen is to, to allow developments to seek flexibility through the ordinance by submitting an affordable housing plan, which is already required, outlining uni, unit counts, flexibility measures, guarantees of affordability that would be, as is now, approved by the Community Development Director and recommended to be considered for approval by the City Council. Based on the evidence specified in the Affordable Housing Plan, the Community Development Director must make a recommendation to the City Council to approve any alternative, any additional request in the tools and incentives, and it must provide as much or more affordable housing at the same or lower income levels. Once again, flexibility is in the spirit of the ordinance, and this allows the City Council to make, to adapt those recommendations for a particular development at its sole discretion. The ordinance changes nineteen sixteen, point two to point five, are all in support of redevelopment on smaller sites. Site area reduction, site width reduction, impervious surface area increase, and open space reduction. Staff recommends adding this flexibility in order to expand the number of smaller sites within the City of Bloomington to be able to produce affordable housing at the density would allow the project to be viable and, and move forward. As I mentioned earlier, eighty-twelve Old Cedar is an example of this, as would be the city-owned property near Queen and American. Another example of the same site size would be the option agreements that the HRA formally had for Ninety-Eighth and Nicolat. However, when the HRA learned that increased density was not the preference of the HRA and the City Council on those lots, with some other factors, that would be an example of where the City Council would not want to utilize their discretion to, to support these incentives. Think of them like density incentives, although under, under the zoning code, they, they are slightly different and do different things. Ordinance change nine point eighteen with the height bonus. This staff recommends approval of a greater height bonus of one additional story and ten additional feet above the height limit set forward in the city's height limit maps. This adds value for more market interest in, for example, three-level townhomes, and it also provides increased density to larger developments that lower per-unit costs and allow for deeper affordability. Nine point nineteen, parking reduction. Staff recommends changing the parking reduction for a development with twenty percent of its units qualifying as extremely low income for a twenty-five percent parking reduction when outside the transit area and a parking reduction within a designated transit area. Given the city priorities for units at thirty percent AMI and below, this change is meant to further incentivize inclusion of these types of units in projects. Currently, the ordinance allows for a nine, a ten to forty percent parking reduction, increasing to deeper levels. So where previously nine percent of the units would need to be affordable to access the parking reduction, it is now twenty percent of the units. So we're looking for more affordability in order to, to access this incentive. Nine point two oh, enclosed parking space conversion allowance. Staff recommends that a development with twenty percent of its units qualifying as extremely low-income affordable housing would qualify to convert one hundred percent of required enclosed parking spaces to unenclosed parking spaces. Once again, given city priorities for units thirty percent AMI and below, this change is meant to further incentivize inclusion of these types of units in the projects. Include, enclosed parking is a significant driver of development costs. Some developers have argued that it could be a safety concern with, with visibility and that it definitely can be a concern with snow plowing. And just to note, the City Council supported this change for Lyndale Flat. Nine point twenty-two, alternative exterior materials allowance. Staff recommends adding engineered wood to the list. Nine point two three, storage space reduction. Staff recommends further flexibility for units with twenty percent of the units affordable at fifty percent AMI or below, including the thirty percent AMI category, to reduce storage space requirements by seventy-five percent. Given the city's priorities for units at fifty and thirty percent AMI, the change is meant to further incentivize those types of units. Developers also report a significant reduction in requests for storage space, and that existing storage pace, space is underutilized. Many developers are working to incorporate much more storage space inside the units that, as well, which is deemed to be more secure and more accessible. Currently, it's a nine percent requirement of affordable units to access a fifty percent reduction. So this is not going all the way with a hundred percent reduction in storage space, but incentivizing further reduction for the fifty and thirty percent AMI units. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Choquist. I would suggest that if anybody has any kind of broad question, let's ask them now. And then if there are any specific questions, what I would ask you to do, Ms. Choquist, is quickly kind of go through each of the changes. We can have it up on the screen for a moment. Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Olson? Uh, thank you. In terms of a broad question, I was taking notes as we went here, but if, if Ms. Choquist could give us a kind of an overview of, you mentioned the input in, in general terms from developers that was reflected quite a bit in other sources. But in terms of the process of making these recommendations, who were the, the players involved? Just, just an overview summary.
Yeah, Chair Thorson and Commissioner Olson. There were community engagement occurred through the three City Council Joint HRA Study Sessions between August and October of last year. The Twin, Twin Cities Lisk hosted a conversation with developers and lenders and a conversation with government philanthropic and nonprofit partners. We also brought the recommendations to the Bloomington Housing Action Team. The, all of the original stakeholders and all of the new developers and lenders and philanthropic and nonprofit partners that came to the table since the launch of the ordinance were consulted in two thousand and twenty. Additionally, we presented this information today at the Bloomington Housing Action Team, and we are working with the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association to bring together another meeting with property owners and the Urban Land Institute to bring together another meeting with housing developers. We will also, when the ordinance changes are published on Thursday, we will send out an email to all the former list of stakeholders from when the Opportunity Housing Ordinance was launched. And I, you know, I must say that I am constantly getting feedback from property owners and developers regarding current ordinance, how well it's working, and, and then, you know, also had received these minor recommendations for some clarifications and changes.
Thank you.
A quick question following that. So there are going to be, there, there are a couple, at least a couple of other stakeholder meetings coming up. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm working with both Minnesota Multi-Housing Association and the Urban Land Institute to try to encourage more attendance. I, I, it's my personal belief that the developers and the property owners prefer speaking to us one-on-one than coming together. But I do think it's important to provide that forum in addition to, you know, working with, with the property owners and, and housing developers and, and of course, our philanthropic partners and funders.
Thank you. I, by, my follow-up question is, do you expect any changes to these proposed amendments as a result of those meetings? And if there are, will they be coming back to the HRA prior to going to council?
If there were major changes, they would be coming back to the HRA, but I predict that major, major changes would be a future amendment. There, as I mentioned, the parking analysis that the Community Development Department and planning in particular is leading. There is also, I know, on the work plan, a discussion of ADUs, alternative dwelling units. So based on my experience working with this group of stakeholders over the past several months, I don't anticipate that anything new would come up that would be pushed forward now as opposed to more thoroughly explored between now and when another, when circumstances would necessitate any additional changes in the future, but not at this time.
And then, did I hear correctly too, that it was going before Planning Commission?
Yes, it will go to Planning Commission on February twenty-fifth and the City Council on March eighth.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Would there be an interest or a question on the, would there be interest on the part of the commissioner in stepping through each of these very quickly and giving us an opportunity on each one to ask questions or make comments? Or is everybody comfortable with what they've seen so far? Any feedback would be appreciated.
Chair, this is Commissioner Lewis.
Commissioner Lewis?
I'm, I'm comfortable with what I've seen so far. I would, I would not be opposed if people wanted to go through them, but I felt it was a pretty clear presentation.
Okay, that's great. I just want to make sure there's quite a bit there that if there's, if, if anybody wanted to go through any, you know, with a finer, a finer look, we'd, we'd have the opportunity. with a finer, a finer look, we'd, we'd have the opportunity to do that. I do have myself a question about, I believe it was nine point one five, and that had to do with approvals by the City Council and, and Community Development Director. I assume that those, you know, come after discussion and if needed approval by the HRA Board. I mean, those kinds of changes would, would be before our board at some point prior?
Chair Thorson, thank you for that question. The, the approval of the Affordable Housing Plan under the ordinance as established and now provides the Community Development Director and this, with the authority to recommend and the City Council with the authority to approve. With that said, the Community Development Director had, at this time, appointed me as staff as the Opportunity Housing Advisor. So I work with all affordable housing, whether it's the HRA or the Port Authority, to develop an affordable housing plan that is shared with the Community Development Director, the HRA Administrator or Port Authority Administrator, Planning Manager and, you know, many others on the leadership team within the city before it is then brought to the appropriate board, whether it would be the HRA or the Port Authority. The Planning Commission obviously is necessary, not only for the Affordable Housing Plan and the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, but for permitting and then on to the City Council for, for final approval. I believe that the HRA and the City Council have the biggest input in approving the public assistance tools and incentives out of the trust fund, whether it's tax increment financing or the Affordable Housing Trust Fund or, or other options that require funding. So I hope that is clear as far as the process goes. While the ordinance rests the authority in the, in the City Council and the Community Development Director, there obviously are many boards and especially the HRA that, that carries the project forward. Especially the HRA Commission.
Well, I saw your hand, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I missed something recently, but I happened, I was looking through emails today. A recent posting from HR did not have a posting for the permanent fill of the Director of Community Development. Just wondering what the status is of that. Not, not a criticism of the, of the interim, but I'm just looking for stability as we move forward.
Yeah, Chair Olson, I defer to HRA Administrator Coleman on this question.
Thank you, Chair Thorson and Commissioner Olson, Erica Coleman. The status of that is that they are conducting interviews for, for that position. And so first and second round interviews are taking place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Huque.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. I just had a little bit of a question on the height bonus. It's ordinance change section nine point one eight. What, and this is just a, maybe a stupid question, but do we know what the, the height bonus is currently? The height limit in the city of Bloomington?
Chair Thorson, Commissioner Huque, I, the existing height bonus currently allows one story or 10 feet. And the proposed amendment to the ordinance of even greater height bonus of one additional story, an additional 10 feet above, above the height limit set forward in the city's height limits map. I, not being a planner, I cannot provide you with more than, as the ordinance needs. But I do know that Planning Manager Glenn Markagard and our now HRA part-time planner, Mike Palermo, believes that this is adding to the incentives to allow for a greater use of the height bonus than has previously been established in the ordinance.
Excuse me, excuse me, real quick, Chair Thorson, Commissioner Huque, if I could clarify a little bit on that. So it actually depends on the area of the location within the city of Bloomington. So the reason that it, the change is phrased this way because planning definitely was a part of this. It depends on the location. So around where the airport is, there's an airport height limit. But other areas, it's six stories or eighty feet, four stories or sixty feet, three stories or fifty feet, or two stories or forty feet. So there is a map, a colored map, but you know, when you look at it, it probably doesn't really come into play until we're talking about development, specific development. So you could actually see what that adjustment of an additional story and 10 additional feet above eighty, sixty, fifty or forty feet would look like.
Chair Thorson, Administrator Coleman, Commissioner Huque, each and every one of these incentives will be coming to the HRA and the City Council for recommendation for approval. So you will be able for every development that comes through to know what the, what the added incentive would be for the height bonus for that particular property.
Thank you. I, I appreciate knowing that because I'm sure that every circumstance will be, could, could be quite different, particularly if we combine the, the height, increased density with perhaps lower setbacks. Of course, I personally would, as we get higher, I would like to see, personally see more open space around the development to make sure there's, you know, livable area, you know, around with less density, maybe less need. So, but I, but I understand that each individual development will have its own unique characteristics. Help me out. I just have one quick question. I know there's a point at which affordability can change when you be, when you go from, you know, a certain number of stories to, to greater because it's more difficult to affordably build, you know, what I, what I guess I call is a stick-built unit. And I'm just wondering if, if there is a sort of a magic number there where you can go up to a certain height and still keep the, the construction type affordable. And this is just for my own education.
Yes, Chair Thorson, it depends on the development, of course, but it's traditionally up to six feet with stick-built before moving to, you know, more durable infrastructure. With that said, we have seen in the developments that have come through the HRA under the ordinance that, that height limit has allowed a project to go, you know, from, from sixty units to eighty units or from a hundred units to a hundred and twenty units. And that makes a really big difference in the total development cost and the per unit cost. So it really, if you're looking at something within the ordinance that provides a big bang for the buck with lowering per unit costs and providing, making, you know, incentivizing more affordable housing units, this one is a very important change. It was, it was a good bonus to start with and we're just trying to deepen it to, to allow, allow the option to, to have an even, even greater height bonus.
Thank you. I appreciate the information. Again, I wasn't, I wasn't, I am very much in support of this additionalness. I'm just wondering how it affects construction technique. I believe I saw Commissioner Huque's hand up and I know I saw Commissioner Olson's up as well. Commissioner Huque.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. I was just, I had had my hand up just a little bit ago and I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Ms. Coleman and Ms. Chalkwist for clarifying that. My concern was just, I know like with some of these developments, sometimes they go in some partially residential areas and I just wanted to make sure that the height bonus was gonna be specific to those areas. So, so residents weren't seeing something completely, you know, out of line. So I do appreciate the clarification. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Huque. Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would appreciate a little more fleshing out on the parking. I know we've talked about that a lot. We've seen requests come in and aware that developers see that as an opportunity for reducing costs. But, but two, two things. One, I believe, Ms. Chalkwist, you commented about Lindale Flats and I recall some of the specifics about that as, as we were seeing the, the development plans. But I'm wondering, I don't recall in response to my question about the stakeholders that had input into all of this, how, how do the changes in parking affect? And how do residents respond to less enclosed or whatever?
Chair Thorson, Commissioner Olson, I believe your question is focused more on the enclosed parking space conversion than the parking reduction in general. So I will address that first. The, when we had conversations with, with property managers and, and residents through the Bloomington Housing Action Team and the earlier, the Bloomington Housing Coalition, having a parking space was much more important than having an enclosed parking space and having an affordable unit also took precedence over having an enclosed parking space. Additionally, the, it seemed in BHAT today and in the past, residents are, are often equally concerned about how close the project is to bus and light rail transit and how often the bus service is near that development. One of the reasons we would like to focus density in certain areas, like the Gateway District and Lindale Avenue in particular, or over in the South Loop, is to try to increase density to provide more, the metro, metro transit to, you know, really look at providing more alternative bus and LRT routes. So I think there's been a mix and this raises the number of units that are required to meet this, to, to access this parking space conversion from nine percent to twenty percent of the units. But it does allow, allow a hundred percent conversion from enclosed parking space to unenclosed parking space.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of staff on the proposed change? Any further staff comments? If not, we would be looking for a motion here. Commissioners, we're looking for a motion of approval if someone is so inclined.
Commissioner Lewis, I move to recommend approval of the amendments to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance.
Do we have second?
Commissioner Huque, second.
Motion by Commissioner Lewis, second by Commissioner Huque. We'll now do the roll call vote. Commissioner Huque.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Nice work. I know we've talked about some, the need for some of these along the way and it's, continues to be exciting to see the, the progress and the interest on the part of developers. On to discussion item, item five point, or six point one, HRA Programs Update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Brian Hartman. Couple, three program updates for you this evening. As you remember, for when we set our calendar for this year, we'll do program updates at the first meeting of every month and then development updates at the second. Our Section Eight Housing Choice Voucher Program, we do not yet have a budget from HUD. They are in the process of working through the budget, budgeting process for that program. So we won't expect to see anything probably until the end of March is my guess. But given that, we have taken a look at our available funding and have determined that we can make selections off our waiting list. I think I mentioned this the last time we met and we've selected 25 people off our 2014 list. And we've actually heard from 20 of them, which is a pretty high return rate when we make selections off our waiting list. So it's exciting to be able to offer assistance to those families. So we'll be working with them and issuing them vouchers here early spring. Our Single Family Home Improvement Loan Program, as you know, the City Council approved $600,000 in strategic priorities funds to the, this program and the neighborhood program, we call it. And that, we have had that transfer from the Finance Department, so it's in our HRA account and we are actively committing those funds now. We also have seen an uptick in repayment of old loans, both for the neighborhood program and also for the CDBG program, which is good. That was pretty quiet last year. Our anticipated program income from repayments was, was down from what we anticipated. So we're hoping that that trend continues. And as you know, as those loans are paid off, we can make new loans with that returned money. And then lastly, at our next meeting, the second meeting in February, representatives from Senior Community Service will be present. We'll be approving their 2021 contract for HRA funding. So Deb Taylor and her staff will be here to be, present a short presentation on their program and the important work they are doing and how it has changed during the pandemic. So I look forward to seeing them, of course, as always. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for program updates and be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Great update. Hearing no questions, seeing no hands, move on to item six to the bylaws discussion. As we continue down that, that discussion on this other very important item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Thorson, Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. So we did have a really good discussion last time, starting with the bylaws. And there were a few questions of Commissioners, of staff and/or legal counsel. So in your packet, in the public packet, there is a HRA Act at Opening Meeting Law provisions. I just want to thank our General Counsel Carla Peterson for taking the time to really put that together. It gave information around some of the questions that were posed as well as the why for, for quite a few things that were included in the bylaws. I think the easiest way to do it this time is to share my screen. So Myra, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Because last time it was really difficult trying to follow along. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, great. So, um, let's see. This is the marked up version that was included in the packet. You did get a PDF version of this, so it might've been a little complicated to look at. I just want to go through and show that everything that's in here is what we discussed. As well as we did add the section for emergency meetings as discussed. And the language that was added was recommended by General Legal Counsel. And this information comes straight from the step, the statute, so it's statutory language. And so, let's see, everything else except for section K, I do want to highlight this because it's Journal of Votes. This was also information provided by General Counsel that stated we need to have a journal of votes. And so the votes of the Commissioners on an action taken in a meeting required to be open to the public must And so the votes of the Commissioners on an action taken in a meeting required to be open to the public must be recorded in a journal kept for that purpose. The vote of each Commissioner must be recorded on each appropriation of money, except for payments of judgments, claims, and amounts fixed by statute. So that is something that has been added to the bylaws that we did not discuss, but it is statutory. And it is something that, as Administrator, I would cause to make sure it's taken care of by us on the staff side. And so it's a just a notification for Commissioners to know. And so we can go to right where we were. I believe we left off at Article Three, Commissioners, Officers, Administrators, Staff. And we, I don't believe we have an update yet regarding the appointment process. As notated here, that the Mayor of Bloomington, with the approval of the City Council, is responsible for appointing the HRA Board Commissioners. And our previous discussion was to look into that and to see exactly what is the actual process and verify the practice with the Council Secretary. So next is Terms of Service. HRA Commissioners shall be appointed for a five-year term. Each vacancy in an unexpired term shall be filled for the remainder of the term for which the original appointment was made. That again is statutory language for the five-year term. And then we ended on City Council Members, that any City Council Member of the City of Bloomington may be appointed and may serve as Commissioner of the HRA. This is this is a discussion by all of the HRA Commissioners. And I just want to let you know that I also have asked a city, the city manager, in terms of what what does the city manager, city leadership, city council, do they have any guidance or input on either way? On having a council member as a voting member commissioner or having a council member as a non-voting member commissioner? So when I hear back, I will report back to the board about whatever input I I received. So are there any questions about any of that or any of the topics from last week?
Commissioners, any questions on that so far? Commissioner Olson?
I just wanted to say maybe more fitting just before we started, but I was really appreciative of the work that staff and Legal Counsel Carla Peterson did. This was a lot of good work and it's suffered needing to use my glasses more often. It was very helpful how you prepared us for tonight. Thank you, including what we are going through now.
Thank you. Any other? Not we can?
All right, great. Thank you very much, Chair Thorson, and thank you for that, Commissioner Olson. So Section B, Officers. There are no proposed changes to this section. The Officers of the HRA shall consist of a Chair, a Vice Chair, a Secretary, and such other officers as shall from time to time be chosen and appointed by the Commissioners. Does anyone have any thoughts, questions, or proposed changes, as staff has none? All right.
Any thoughts?
Okay, I hear or see none, so I'll move on to the next section. So you'll see here that the the numbering changes. And the reason that it changes is because Officers is the section. And the subsections of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary shall be numbered and not lettered. They're not different sections. So that's the first change. And then the Chair shall be selected by the Commissioners and shall preside at all meetings of the Commissioners. And proposed change of an addition, as required, the Chair shall be responsible for certification of official actions of the HRA. That is adding that to the bylaws. And that would be the signature process by the Chair. Any questions or thoughts on that addition?
Hearing none.
All right. Number two, Vice Chair. There are no proposed changes to the Vice Chair subsection. The Vice Chair shall be selected by the Commissioners and shall preside at all meetings of the Commissioners in the absence of the Chair and shall perform such other duties as may be as may be assigned by the Commissioners. In the case of death, retirement, or resignation of the Chair, the Vice Chair shall perform and be vested with all the duties and powers of the Chair until such time that a new Chair is chosen by the Commissioners. Three, Secretary. So this section changes just a tad. Striking the Commissioners shall select the Commissioner who shall act in the capacity as a Secretary and updating it to state, the Secretary shall be selected by the Commissioners. Period. The Secretary shall be responsible for attesting official actions of the HRA. And so that is just the witness and witnessing by signature process that actually is happening. But this is putting making it clear in the bylaws. Any thoughts, questions? Okay. So now we'll move on to Section C. The reason it's changed is because Section B and then included the subsections of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. So now this is Section C, Administrator. There's not many changes. We're keeping the Commissioners shall appoint an Administrator who shall not be a Commissioner, comma, but who may be an employee of the city. The Administrator shall be responsible for, one, securing, supervising, and directing any personnel required for work to be accomplished by the HRA and removing the semicolon and putting a period. Yeah, sorry. And then for number two, striking, providing for the taking of and preparing and adding recording of the minutes for each meeting of the HRA. And adding a period. And then three, maintaining any appropriate files as deemed necessary by the Commissioners, including files of minutes, publication of meetings, and meeting agendas. Four, the general administration and financial management of the affairs of the HRA pursuant to policies determined by the Commissioners, striking and in the semicolon and adding a period. And then five, any assigned responsibilities, any other responsibilities assigned by the Chair of Commissioners. Are there any questions, updates, changes, or additions to the duties set forth here for the Administrator?
Any questions or comments on this section?
All right. Section D, Staff Services. There are no proposed changes to Staff Services. If the HRA uses personnel under the control of the City Manager, a contract for services shall be entered into with which clearly designates the services provided. And as you know, we did do the contract for services before revisiting the bylaws. So that is in place and has been agreed upon by the Commissioners and is reflective of the bylaws. And we can revisit if there needs to be any updates, but I believe we won't have any updates to the Staff Services contract. As we recalled before, Article Four, Quorum and Voting, we did combine that with a previous section. So this strikeout is not deleting it, it was moving it to a previous section that we've already discussed. And this is just a mistake on my part. This should say Article Four. There we go. So Finance and Contracts. The the first changes in Section A, Fiscal Year, is just changing calendar from a capitalized C to a lowercase c and adding S on the end of undertaking. So the calendar year shall be the fiscal year of the of the HRA. However, other fiscal years for specific purposes or undertakings of the HRA may be established as required or desirable. I think this was a question before, our year is January to December, our fiscal year, our calendar year. Section B, Budget. The following budgetary proceedings are hereby established. So there is an addition with Section, excuse me, Subsection One, to make it more clear and aligned with the previous changes we did earlier. And a budget shall be prepared by the Administrator, who shall present the budget to the Commissioners of the HRA for consideration, striking the first meeting of August and changing it to at a regular meeting of the HRA in September of each year. Number two, Subsection Two, there were no changes. This is detailing what the budget shall include. And then number three, Subsection Three, just for more clarity, after full consideration of the budget, the Commissioners of the HRA shall give their approval to it and the Chair of the HRA shall cause, and this actually was it probably wasn't worded correctly, shall cause the budget to be submitted to the City Council, not later than the City Council meeting in December of each year. So it is reflecting the changes in dates that we have already outlined. Any questions or comments? Okay. Section C, there are no changes proposed by staff. This is the investments of the HRA. The investments of the HRA funds shall be the responsibility of the Administrator in accordance with the investment policy approved by the Commissioners of the HRA. Any questions? All right. Section D, Contracts and Procurement. This was just making it clear that Subsection One is general, that all construction work and work of demolition and clearing contracts for services or for repairs, maintenance, and replacements, and every purchase of equipment, supplies, or materials and contracts therefore shall be in accordance with the procurement policy of the HRA. Section Two, this is capitalization of approval of contract by attorney. And then one addition, which are two additions, but except for the purchase of expendable office supplies and those standardized program contracts from the local, state, or federal government that, in the judgment of the Administrator, do not require, and it's striking attorney and saying legal review, no contract should be made by the HRA through any officer or employee except in writing and approved as to form by the attorney for the HRA. And then adding, which approval need not be evidenced by the attorney's signature on the contract. That is for clarification purposes. There really has been conversation on whether there needs to be an attorney's signature to show approval or review. And we have, staff has suggested or recommended that there does not require to have an additional signature on the contract to show approval and review. Subsection Three, Execution of Contracts, there are no proposed changes to the execution of the contracts. Which execution is the assigned of the Administrator? Or an assignee of the Administrator in the absence of the Administrator. Section E, Disbursements. Again, Subsection One is just capitalization, federal funds. And there's no other proposed changes. Subsection Two, Official Depository, just to update with the times, adding or wire transfer. It states it shall be dispersed only by check, which could put us in a bind. So we have or wire transfer to add that technology. Subsection Three, Checks, there are no proposed changes. The signature on the checks will remain the same and the checks will be drawn on the bank accounts of the HRA. Article Five, Powers and Duties. Here, we're just capitalizing Chapter of Minnesota Statutes, Chapter 469. No other proposed changes. And then Article Six, Amendments, stating these bylaws may be amended at any meeting of the HRA, provided that notice of such proposed amendment is provided to each Commissioner of the HRA at least 10 days prior to such meeting. The amendment of the bylaws and the vote required should be in accordance with that with that set forth under the voting provisions of these bylaws. And that would be us reviewing, discussing at this time and bringing back a clean and redline version for the Commissioners to vote on at the annual meeting on March 9, which would be more than 10 days' notice for when we put the notice out for that. So I will stand for any questions, comments, but that is the end of the bylaws.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Sorry, I should put my video back on, so I'm a live person. I just wanted to compliment the staff and the work that went into this. I appreciated the clarification and the simplification of a lot of things and the removal of unnecessary language. I like, you know, I thought that was really great. I made a little comment here, cleaning it up. I thought it looked really good and I just want to share that. And that's it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Absolutely. I forgot to unmute when I talked. Commissioner Olson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I agree with Commissioner Lewis. One of the things that we spent a fair amount of time talking about was the fact that, not that we need, I mean, it's good for Bloomington to be unique for good reasons. And this could be one of them, but we have a more complicated, detailed bylaws than is apparently the norm in Minnesota. And so we talked about moving some things to policy, and I think we've done that a little bit. But I'm just wondering, the moment since since we've talked about that, if there could be another pass by staff and legal to to determine if there are some things that would be better off dealt with as policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Thorson, Commissioner Olson. Outside of what we discussed, staff has not brought forward anything else that should be that would better fit as policy. But Carla Peterson, our General Counsel, is on the on the meeting. And I will ask Carla, is there anything that, in your opinion, should be a policy that we have left in the bylaws?
Oh, I'm trying to start my video, but it doesn't seem to want to let me. I'm here though today. Erica, maybe you can scroll up a little bit. I I think what we discussed to move was maybe some of the agenda items. And so I believe if you just go a little higher up here. Yeah, so stop there if you would. So I think this is the agenda, if I'm remembering correctly, for the regular meetings. Oh, scroll up just a tad more. Want to see the title of the section. Yes, Regular Meetings. So I think we proposed to move that into policy. If we go down a little bit further, there's also, or maybe it's up further, but somewhere in here, there's an agenda for that was still left in there, down here in the voting. Wait, no, voting we did. Actually, it must be above. I'm sorry. I'm trying to direct Erica without having the printed copy sitting in front of me. Okay, yes, Conduct of Business at the Annual Meeting. So we discussed moving that into a policy document, which I don't believe we have started yet. And that was something I don't normally see that specific of an agenda in bylaws. It's up to the Commissioners if they would like to move the specific agenda for the regular meetings into a policy document. I believe we're still showing that as in the bylaws. Other than that, I think all of the changes that staff has discussed and recommended are helpful. I agree with Commissioner Lewis. We're cleaning it up, simplifying it, getting it into a modern age with some of the revisions. So I think, great job.
Thank you. I do have one broad question having to do with the bylaws stating that the Commissioners are appointed by the City Council, you know, period. And then we've had some discussions here about, and I realize there's more input to come, but about whether or not a Commissioner should be a City Council Member and other discussions about what the makeup could be as a possible discussion in in our policy, it sounds like, versus bylaws. But how does, I am curious, Carla, from your perspective, how any anything we put into either our bylaws or our policy, wouldn't that be, as it relates to the appointment of Commissioners? Wouldn't that be overridden by whatever the Council decides when they decide to appoint Commissioners for an opening? They're not held to anything we put into the bylaws, well, certainly in our policy.
Well, I think here that the most pertinent thing is the state statute, which was included in your package, 46903. Subdivision Six specifically talks about appointment and says the Commissioners shall be appointed by the Mayor with the approval of the governing body. So we are not able to change that. We are able to change whether the number We are able to change um whether the number of of City Council members. We can decide that as a body as to um whether we want, as Erica has pointed out, a City Council member as a voting member or a City Council member as an ex-official member, or whether we want to limit the number of Council members. But we are not able to change the statutory provision that says the Commissioners are appointed by the Mayor. Although from last um meeting, it sounds as though perhaps this is not completely following that practice, and I believe Administrator Coleman indicated staff is continuing to follow up with the city on that. So we should, I think, continue to follow up with that and make sure we understand the process. And if we want to uh make further adjustments in the bylaws, we certainly could do that. I would suggest that would be a provision that would probably be most appropriate in the bylaws rather than a policy if we were going to um define the makeup of the of the Board of Commissioners more more um definitively.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I and I I understand what's in the, what's in the statute as it relates to um uh how the Commissioners are appointed, appointed by, I I said Council, but appointed by the uh Mayor and approved by the Council, but I'm saying, should we as a board decide that we want uh our um bylaws to state that um you know, uh uh for example, a councilperson would be ex-official. Um, Doug, can't the council, this was, this was sort of the core of my question, given that the the Mayor appoints the Commissioners and the Council approves them, can't then the council act outside of anything we might put in the bylaws because of state statute? I don't know if I'm being clear, but that's kind of the gist of what I'm hoping to get answered.
Yes, Chair Thorson Commissioners, I believe you're asking, can we um in our bylaws specify something that can be overridden by the City Council? I have not specifically analyzed that question, but I believe that you have the ability to specify in your bylaws, again, whether you have Council members or not. From, you know, our research that we've done on other HRAs, there are certainly other HRAs in the state that provide in their bylaws, how many Council members can be Commissioners of the HRA?
So at least in practice, that's operating. Um, but we don't know necessarily whether uh a future City Council might uh choose to appoint a Council member, provided we move away from that. And that that, and that they would have the legal ability to do that. Is that correct?
That's correct, and it ideally, and I've done this before um with other HRAs, uh specifically with, working with a county HRA recently, the the preferred practice to do what you're describing would be to have both the City Council and the HRA Board adopt these parameters as to the makeup of the HRA Board. So that that they're saying they also agree that they're only going to appoint X number of Council members to your Board. You agree that that's the limit on your Board, and then to change that would take future action by the Board of Commissioners and the City Council.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Commissioner Olson, I saw your hand.
Uh, thank you, uh Mister Chair. Um following on that a little bit, um we, there's a couple of issues that were discussed, including in the comments on the right uh margin, which I appreciated uh that we haven't dealt with tonight. And so I know we're waiting on uh uh reports from uh the city administration and and so on, but uh I I think uh this is a time for us to uh resolve those, however. And um I'm I'm not um uh I'm not critical of how how City Council input happens, but in terms of representation for housing and redevelopment, we really don't have provisions in our bylaws and certainly not in our practice uh to work toward having uh representation from people affected by HRA action. And uh one way that we've talked about it uh is um in terms of uh going uh up to fi- uh six or seven members. And I believe um perhaps a comment from you, Carla, on the right margin at one point that uh that that's something that you could promote, and I believe, or enough word is promote, but to pursue. And uh and that you indicated that it was not likely to be a controversial thing with the legislature and that we could uh increase to six or seven people. And that would permit us to uh, or the Council, I guess, actually, to uh permit them to uh appoint people to this commission uh that that could be uh with some guidelines about having representation. And I know uh bottom line from my time in the in the Council is that finding the best people uh for serving in in any capacity uh by appointment um needs to be seeking the best. And and I think it it's really time for us to indicate that, in my opinion, that like in some others, like on the um diversity uh commission, uh that's not the right word, but and um and some others that youth are are uh one spot needs to be designated for youth. And I think that the Council uh maybe from uh discussion that we pass on to them uh that that we need to uh put on the table, that it's important uh for a body like this to have uh voice votes uh in, again, potentially ex-official and not voting. But I think we need to put that on the table and pursue it. So I would, I, what I'm basically saying is I think we need to uh pursue particularly the issue with the legislature about adding members. Uh discuss that and move that forward to the Council, and then also discuss uh the number of of members from the Council, uh whether they have a vote or not. And I don't have a real strong opinion on that if it's only one Council member, but right now, a Council member on the Commission has a vote or uh one of seven on the Council and one of five uh in this body. So uh just like us to uh stay with us until we resolve it better than we have it at this point. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Olson. I was gonna bring up the same thing. I do want to see us uh having a full discussion on uh the idea of expanding the Board and uh uh requesting of the of the processes that would take place to to begin that process, whether it's reaching out to our uh legislative uh coalition to see if there's support as a beginning and sponsoring, or whether it's done through lobbyists or whatnot, but I I I completely agree. We want to have those discussions. Um and they may uh, you know, require that we revisit the bylaws. I think this is an excellent process we've gone through to clean up the bylaws, but you are absolutely right. There's some ideas we talked about that uh we want to make sure uh that we continue to focus on those uh as uh as part of, and that could certainly be a part of our our next strategic planning meeting, because I think that's, that is a uh certainly expanding the Board and expanding the diversity is a strategic priority, or you know, could, is is part of that process. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Um any other comments on this? Any other comments from Commissioners? Any other questions? If not, this uh discussion will continue, and uh there will be a vote on the change of the bylaws at our uh annual business meeting, correct? No action needed tonight.
Thank you, Chair Thorson. No action needed tonight, and it would be a vote uh at the annual meeting. Uh but you would be made available of answers to the questions that we're able to get answers to, discussion or um points of clarification with the City Council and City Leadership, as well as a clean and redline version to review beforehand.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Olson?
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you, uh Ms. Coleman. I, Administrator Coleman. Um, did, did what you say indicate that our next meeting, we would have a cleaned up copy um with the redline or whatever uh that we have discussed, well, would, redline. But also that that the issues that uh Mark and I just talked about would would uh, there would be some response from whoever in the city um would be uh important to get their input to. Did you say that?
Thank you, Chair Thorson, Commissioner Olson. I did not promise, but I do expect that by our next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be February twenty-third, I should have responses to all of the questions posed. Uh, not to say that we'll have a solidified um, solidified uh point or point of um, what's the word, coordination when we come together. Um but I should expect to have responses by our next regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks on February twenty-third.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, looking at the agenda, looks like we are at the end of our agenda. Uh at this point, if there's no other discussion, I would look
You accidentally muted yourself, Chair.
All right, so, thank you. Uh I I see no other items on the agenda for this evening. Um if if there's no other other discussion, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening.
Uh, Commissioner Olson moves that we adjourn at this time.
Commissioner Lewis, second.
Motion by Olson, second by Lewis, uh to adjourn the meeting. How will now do a roll call vote? Commissioner Huqueen?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Olson, or Commissioner Thorson and I, uh meeting is now adjourned. Thank you again, everyone.